Consent agenda items will be taken following the announcement of any items being polled from consent. Speakers registered on non-consent items other than public hearing and zoning cases will be taken following council announcements. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak on all of the items within those blocks that they registered to speak on. Before you begin your comments, please state your name. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette, and welcome to your Fort Worth City Council meeting. We are graced tonight by Ms. Sally Mays, a Fort Worth resident who is 91 years young, and she is our mayor for a day. I'm going to allow Ms. Sally here to gavel us in.
Hello, everybody. This is Mustang Sally. Let's get this meeting started because I have a lot of opinions.
Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledges of allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Monte Francis Senior from Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church.
Shall we pray? God and our Father, how we thank you for the privilege of prayer. We thank you for all the things you do for us. We are filled with gratitude tonight to gather in a place of civility, a place where we can come together, God, and bring our minds together and our hearts together, our focus. We are grateful, God, that we are in a land of freedom of expression, freedom of thought. Thank you, God, and we pray for equity. We pray for equality. We pray for continued peace. We pray that you would bless this meeting, God, let it be what you would want it to be as a people gathered together in a place of peace and harmony. Bless those who govern, protect them, we pray. In Jesus' name, amen.
Our next items will be special presentations, with the first one being by Mayor Parker.
Ladies and gentlemen, as I introduced Ms. Sally earlier, let me give you some important context as to why we invited her to be here in her City Hall. She was awesome upstairs. She asked me, why did it take 91 years to get to come to City Hall? But she is the rightful mayor for today. If you did not know, she's also Instagram famous and garnered over 4.3 million Instagram views on a video we're going to cue here in a minute. Sally's heartfelt and humorous opinions have certainly earned her features in both the Fort Worth Star Telegram, ABC News, Channel 8 WFAA, and today, we're honored to have her here with us. Sally, thank you so much for being such an awesome vibrant voice for our community. You're a joy, for sure.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. This is fabulous. You all are treating me wonderful. I'm 91 and I'm mayor. I mean, it's great. Thank you. And I've lived in Texas all my life and Fort Worth. Go Fort Worth.
Okay, at this point, we're going to play this video. Humorous opinions have certainly earned her features in both the Fort Worth Star Telegram, ABC News.
Why do you give me a hard time about Dallas? Oh, because everything is so flutie-tootie and the food is so... Oh, yes, and then you look and a sandwich is $75, and you think, oh, my dear, that's okay, this is such and such a place. Well, I just... And you act flutie-tootie, and your car is flutie-tootie, and Dallas is flutie-tootie, and I live in here. Well, I know Fort Worth, and well, Fort Worth isn't ruddy-tooty. It's nice, a good, great place to live. Dallas is all... Everybody over there, they're all, something's wrong with them all.
There you go, ladies and gentlemen. So thank you all for giving her the warm welcome that she deserves. She's joked earlier that her wonderful daughter here, Catherine, behind me, is now Steven Spielberg, and I asked her, who does that make her as an actress? And she was kind of unsure at this point. We talked about Meryl Streep, maybe, but the jury is still out. So please follow her. Remind me the Instagram handle.
Lady Who Lounges.
Lady Who Lounges on Instagram. And I promise you, if you need something joyful to watch every day on social media, this is something you should absolutely see. So again, one more round of applause for Ms. Sally Mays. Of course, thank you so much. Okay, next up is an important recognition for our Fort Worth Fire Department and partners for the Cooper Fire Assistance. And Councilwoman Elizabeth Beck, this is yours.
See, I have a stack because we have a list today. If I could be joined by those of you that I see trying to hide out and not join me, and I'm going to call you by name, Chris Cranfield of United Way, Mike Brennan of Near Southside, Megan Henderson of Near Southside, and then everyone from the Red Cross that is here, if you could please join me as well. I think Ken Shetter from One Safe Place. Is anyone from Emergency Management here? No. Okay, it's going to make my life easy. Neighborhood Services, come on down, come on down. There you are, Sonny. Casey, come on down. You see, all these people are not wanting to come down because they're humble, and they don't want me to brag on everything that they did. But it's my show, and I have the microphone, so now you have to sit there and listen to Back in June, our city experienced a horrific fire. 824 residents suddenly found themselves homeless in our city. That's like the equivalent of an entire small neighborhood burning down, and we saw that in one night. Our fire department came in and fought the fire for over eight hours. Red Cross was first on the scene. They stayed there not just that evening, but as the days turned into weeks and our residents found themselves in crisis. The Red Cross was an amazing partner to the city of Fort Worth and to those residents. Our Office of Emergency Management, Sonny and team, together with Neighborhood Services, really, as time ticked on and it went from days to weeks, you really saw people start to pick up as we truly understood the need of our residents in the community. And then One Safe Place, you opened your doors immediately and provided shelter space, and when we needed resource point, you were there. So thank you for always being a great community partner. And then the United Way, and specifically Megan Henderson from Near Southside. That Monday evening is when the fire occurred. By Wednesday, the three of us had sat there and thought, well, what do we do? The calls for help were pouring in, and so were the calls for those folks that wanted to support. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank those members of council that were supportive, Chris Nettles, who came down that evening, to those of you that shared our fundraising efforts on your social media, Dr. Peoples, Mia Hall, thank you for that. It was truly an effort, and because Megan and Chris are so amazing and so organized, I truly do not know how they did it all. We raised over $100, a little over $100,000 to give individual grants to members of that community who found themselves homeless. So without further ado, here we go. Whereas, on June 3, 2025, a historic six-alarm fire broke out at the Cooper Apartments located at 1,001 West Rosedale Street in the heart of Fort Worth's Near Southside. As a result, over 800 Fort Worth residents were displaced, disrupting their lives and casting a long shadow of grief and uncertainty across our community within a matter of hours. Whereas, in the face of this devastating loss, the city of Fort Worth witnessed an extraordinary effort by organizations and agencies committed to restoring hope and delivering relief. And whereas, the Fort Worth Fire Department acted with exceptional bravery and skill, leading firefighting, evacuation, and lifesaving efforts under dangerous conditions, exemplifying the highest standards of public service and commitment to protecting our residents. This quick response and skill resulted in zero injuries or loss of life. Whereas, the Fort Worth Office of Emergency Management demonstrated exemplary leadership by coordinating with the American Red Cross and the City of Fort Worth Neighborhood Services Department to establish a resource center at One Safe Place, providing a critical centralized location where impacted residents could access emergency services, housing assistance, and recovery resources with dignity and efficiency. And whereas, the American Red Cross played an indispensable role in the immediate aftermath of the Cooper Apartments' fire, deploying trained teams to help provide food, water, emotional support, and emergency relief supplies to displaced residents. Their swift action and compassionate service ensured that individuals and families had a safe place to turn during their time of great need. And whereas, the Near Southside and the United Way, that would be you, Megan, and you, Chris, collaborated to mobilize community and networks to raise financial support and ensure residents received timely, effective assistance in the days and weeks following the fire. Not only did these organizations help raise much-needed funds, but provided a central point of contact to connect community partners that wanted to help residents. Now, therefore, the city of Fort Worth does hereby and recognize the following groups for their exceptional emergency response to the Cooper Fire Apartments. All right, and I'm going to offer the Red Cross, if you'd like to say a few words, and then someone from Near Southside or Emergency Management, if you'd like to offer a few words as well. And then we'll take a picture. That's the fun part.
I just want to recognize our excellent team who was out there and responding very quickly, and we want to thank the Emergency Management team for their collaboration and contacting us. So it's been a great opportunity to serve the community and to utilize our volunteers for the service of those who are in need after a disaster. Thank you so much.
I won't belabor the point other than just to say thank you for our volunteers and thank you for our community. It does mean a lot when we come back together. Of course, we still have community members hurting today, those that are seeking shelter still, so it's an ongoing disaster, and sometimes that happens when we do these things. But just thank you for the community's support. Appreciate it.
Well, I'm very humbled that I should also say that it's a team effort. It's true of the Near Southside spirit. It's always a team effort. There's one person who has really not taken enough credit for the work that was done, and that is Elizabeth herself. Councilwoman Beck was fast on the phone. It was a council break. You could have been anywhere in the world during that time, and instead, you were standing outside the Cooper eagerly working to support those residents. So really, I'm so appreciative of the entire city staff that came together, leadership from our council director or for our council member, and also from the real resilience of the Near Southside community and Fort Worth's community at large, who did not leave these people without some answers. To Chris Cranfield, who was kind of our partner in crime and behind the scenes, we're tirelessly, very, very late nights on top of a traditional job that she had to carry the load of, I want to thank you for just being the type of person who raised your hand to help those in need. And to Sonny's point, there are still people in need, and so our community continues to rise to the occasion for any need that remains. So thank you, everyone, for the recognition. Kudos to the incredible team all around that came together, and thank you to Councilwoman Beck for her acknowledgement of this incredible team that surely shows up to the door of many other disasters when they're needed as well, and we're very fortunate to have everybody here.
And I would be remiss to say, if I didn't say, that each person up here privately, well, or each entity privately pulled me aside and said, I want you to know that Sonny really did a great job, and I've worked with, you know, I've worked with a lot of emergency management, but you've really got a great team at the city of Fort Worth, and I can't believe the way Neighborhood Services came out, and I can't believe how good the Red Thank you, and I think we have Dr. Daniel Guzman, the Medical Director of the AIM Cross is doing, like, they're really helping us. And so I don't know if you all said it to each other, but you all individually said for Safety at Cook Children's, if you want to come on up. it to me, which lets me know that we had the right team doing the right work. This month is Gun Safety Awareness Month. So let's get a photograph and celebrate this. Such an important topic, and as I read some stats to you here, you'll understand why it's so important. We bring this issue to our community, and I really appreciate the work that Cook Children's is doing to help keep our babies safe, to keep our families safe, and keep our babies safe as we keep our families safe. So without further ado, whereas unsecured guns pose a clear safety risk, particularly to children, when guns are not stored safely or securely and are accessible to unsupervised minors, the risk of death or injury significantly increases. And whereas, in the United States, an average of 350 children a year get access to loaded firearms and accidentally shoot themselves or someone else. Since 2015, there have been at least 314 unintentional shootings by children, resulting in 149 deaths and 177 injuries in Texas alone. In 2022, firearm-related injuries were among the five leading causes of death for people ages 1 to 44 in the United States, and currently, about 132 people die from firearm injury every year. 1.46 million minors in the U.S. live in homes with at least one loaded unlocked firearm. Studies show that between 70% and 90% of guns used in youth suicides, unintentional shootings among children, and school shootings perpetrated by shooters under the age of 18 are acquired from the home or the homes of relatives or friends. And whereas, between 2020 and 2024, Cook Children's Fort Worth Medical Center treated 303 gun-related injuries, most of which were unintentional. And whereas, educating and resourcing communities to practice safe gun handling and storage is a proven, actionable, and meaningful way to create safer homes and neighborhoods across the city, state, and country. Now, therefore, the city of Fort Worth does hereby proclaim August as Gun Safety Awareness Month.
So I want to start off by thanking Councilwoman Beck, as well as Mayor Parker and the rest of the council. We appreciate this, and it's an important recognition for gun safety in Fort Worth. It's a powerful statement that you guys send by acknowledging this because I think it shows families that their safety matters, and then we're here to walk along you guys, along your side to make sure that we keep people safe. And again, one of the most important things is that we need to make sure we lock up our firearms. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. Our next presentation is a recognition honoring the life and legacy of J.W. Robinson, Councilmember Chris Nettles.
While they're taking a picture, I'm going to ask... The family to come up. Believe his lovely wife is here, daughter, granddaughter, son-in-law. So those that are here, if you will come up, I want to offer a few remarks, and then also my fellow colleague, Deborah Peoples, would like to offer a few remarks, and then we'll come down and read the proclamation together. Those of you that don't know, Robinson's Barbecue is housed in District 8 off of Berry and been there for over 40 years. And I would tell you, if you've been down Berry Street, we have seen a lot of things come and go, such as like Texas-style chicken, Williams Chicken, and the list goes on and on. But Robinson's Barbecue from Kansas City style has made it through every issue and hurdle, pandemics, and so we want to take the opportunity and the passing to honor his legacy and his family for bringing in such an awesome business to the district and serving the people of Fort Worth. And so I want to really offer up those words to this family.
Well, I want to start by saying, you know, one of the things that we do on this council, Kiana, is we talk a lot about economic development. And don't you cry, baby, don't you dare cry, because your family is an institution that brought economic development to the South Side. In a time when people of color did not succeed, Robinson's Barbecue became an institution, and you know I love those rib tips. So I just want you to know how grateful I am because of the example your family set, not only for those of us who lived in the community, who the work went to that business almost, I went two and three times a week, but what you said for young entrepreneurs across this city and across this country. You should be proud, Mrs. Robinson. And Care Bear, girl, you got a legacy to live up to.
And I also offer up, before I read, I used to go and get the Hottling Sandwich Light Pickle, a whole pickle, those who don't know, and grape Kool-Aid. And I would tell you, I would just love to order the food, and then when we order, the young lady in the window, she'd start hollering back, "Hottling Light, Hottling Light." I mean, it's just about the history and just shows how much of our people that was on the South Side. So I want to read this proclamation, and special recognition. The city of Fort Worth, special recognition presented to J.W. Robinson, AKA Pitmaster, in recognition of 40 years in business and legacy. J.W. Robinson is the visionary who brought Kansas City-style barbecue to East Berry Street for over 40 years. If you have ever stopped by the Red Chuck wagon, you will likely have enjoyed a bolo sandwich, chopped beef, baked beans, and a refreshing red Kool-Aid. Rib tips, all right, and Hottling Light. Mr. Robinson was known by many names within the Fort Worth Community Barbecue, Pitmaster, Doc, Pops, Brother, or just simply Mr. Robinson. He was a pillar of our community, sharing countless memories by bringing families and friends together through his delicious barbecue, always serving with a cheerful heart and a warm smile. Mr. Robinson's presence at Robinson was more than just about great food. It was about community, love, and connection. His passion for barbecue and loyalty to his customers base and extended family on the South Side was incredible. The life and legacy of J.W. Robinson are woven into the fabric of East Berry Street in Fort Worth itself. We as the city recognize and honor the profound impact he has had in our many communities. There will never be another J.W. Robinson's Barbecue, and his memory will forever be cherished. Thank you to his family, his wife, and children for his unwavering commitment to serving the South Side community of Fort Worth for over decades. Your legacy will always be remembered in our hearts, and we present this to you.
Kiana, would you like to say something? No.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Nettles and Councilwoman Deborah Peoples, known as Mama Peoples to me, because her daughter and I grew up together and went to school together. Y'all are truly a blessing at this time as we move forward with just continuing my dad's legacy, and we're grateful for you to honor him and recognize all that he's done over the last 40 years.
This is Alfred Roberts Jr., and he is going to be an amazing keeper of the family lex.
have to say to her, remember us when, you're famous one day, because this young lady is truly gifted. As many of you know, this amazing woman to my left, Ms. Lauren Saba, started a high school art competition under the mayor's name when Mayor Price was mayor. Now that I'm your mayor, whoever's mayor next will continue this tradition because you recognize the talent that is in this city. We always talk about how important our arts community is to this city. Our culture is at the fabric of who we are, but it won't continue if we don't invest in the youth here in classrooms across the city of Fort Worth. One of my favorite days of the year is getting to come into a beautiful curated art competition in Lauren's amazing art studio, art gallery, rather, here in Fort Worth, just off Montgomery near Dicky's. If you have not visited, I highly encourage you to do so. And what Lauren has done is opened up this amazing gallery to young talent, and each year, she chooses a panel of judges, many of them are curators and leaders from our very own museums here in Fort Worth, and students enter this competition from all over our city. And to my left this evening is this year's winner, Chloe Lindsay. Her piece, which she brought with us tonight, is secretly admired her. It's absolutely breathtaking. What's a fun fact, many of you don't know, she's an 11th grader in high school at John Paul II High School, but she's also a student at Hull Art Academy and attending Mary Hole's Advanced Figurative Class. This piece was completed in 40 minutes at Hull Art Academy with a live model. It's obvious that Chloe enjoys pushing herself creatively, artistically, and exploring various design elements. This piece will be displayed here at City Hall, but importantly, is a reflection of, I think, Chloe's just getting started. Would you like to say a few words? You're welcome. Go for it.
I mean, I don't have a lot to say. I'm really nervous, but I'm really, really excited to be here, and I'm really thankful that you guys are able to give me this opportunity. I have a lot more art that I'm wanting to create, so this is really, really encouraging for me and my art career. Thank you so much.
Lauren, would you like to say a few words? You're welcome.
Thank you all for having us. Yes, first and foremost, Maddie, thank you so much for contributing to this show. Fort Worth has always been such an amazing support for culture. I've lived here almost my entire life, and to be able to have an art gallery to support youth and to support our community is phenomenal. Gallery of Dreams is a subsidiary in a way. It's our nonprofit of Fort Worth's art, and we're able to do the high school show, which next year will be our 10th year. So we're really excited to have the support of the AMG Carter Foundation this last year, as well as the city, and hopefully more, so that we can grow this show and continue to do programs like this. Chloe, last thing I want to say is she was a sophomore when she did this work, so she's going to be a junior this coming year, so she has two more years to compete. And the curator was Dr. Eric Lee, who is the Executive Director of the Kimball Art Museum. So all of these hundreds and hundreds of kids in our city who applied, whether they got in the show or not, got to have their artwork looked at by the Executive Director of a major museum, and in Fort Worth is one of the only cities I can ever think of that you could say that about and say that in. So thank you all. Thank you. Let's take a picture.[1784.26]
We have two items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda so that council members can make comments. The first is MNC 25-0658. This is the High Impact Program. And MNC 25-0679, this is a request of Prince Hall Gardens for a 50% tax abatement.
Items to be continued or withdrawn by staff?
We've got three items. MNC 25-0673 will be withdrawn by staff completely. ZC 25-078 will be continued to August 26 meeting, and ZC 05-029 will be continued to October 14.
Mayor, that gets us to the consent speakers, and I believe we have one.
Speaker is David Martinez.
I signed up to speak before I saw Councilwoman Martinez's post about the construction being done at the Seagull Vasquez Park at Echo Lake. I didn't see that, but I saw it now and realized it's for this park. But before all that, I went to this community center, Worth Heights Community Center, and we were discussing the Fall Festival that is a big turnout in South Side. So one of the things that we wanted to talk about, if anybody's with the city that could help us out, we, one of the big draws for the community center at Fall Festival was for the kids to go on the haunted hayride around the Echo Lake. They thought it was real spooky and stuff like that, so it's a big deal. We have hundreds of people that ride it, so it's going to be blocked off around Fall Festival time, around Halloween. So if there's another location that we could get or something like that, another, like a little pathway, it doesn't have to be long lengthways or anything like that, just a little space where the kids can go on the hayride and then come back to the parking lot area. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Counsel, that can conclude our consent agenda speakers. Got a motion and a second, counsel? Any other discussion? Motion carries.
Our next item will be MNC 25-0679, that was pulled from consent.
Councilwoman Nettles, this one's in your district, yes?
All right, thank you. Yes, I did speak to Dana, but I wanted the staff to come up and kind of articulate the denial request from Prince Hall for the property tax exemption. So, okay, Casey is here.
Hello, Casey Thomas, Neighborhood Services Department.
I don't think your microphone's on. May have to come to the middle mic.
Right now. Go ahead.
Okay.
Hello? Yes, so this one is a affordable housing development that is already existing. It was rehabbed in 2012. It is located on East Robert Street in Council District Eight. It consists of 100 units, and they are all targeted for residents who are at or below 60% of area median income. This particular tax code, this is the first time that we are aware of in recent history that we have received an organization to request a tax exemption under this particular code. But what it is, is once the county reaches a population of $2.1 million or more, developers of affordable housing can petition to the taxing entity to have a 50% tax abatement. Under this particular code, we have the ability to deny the request for two specific reasons. One, if the entity determines that it does not need any affordable housing, which that is not the case here in Fort Worth. And then the other one is if they're, from a revenue perspective, the entity cannot absorb the increase. And so we were recommending denial based on the fact that our revenue has not, is not increasing as much as it has in the past, and also due to the fact that the city had to take 1% budget cuts in order to balance this budget for the 2026 year.
Yeah. A question for you, will, if this is, are they doing affordable housing now at this property?
It is already an affordable housing development, so this is not creating any new affordable housing units.
Okay, and so families that live in Prince Hall would not be affected with their rent structure if this request is denied?
I cannot say that for sure, because we do not control the owner. The owner is out of the Houston area, but assuming that the affordable housing project is already in place, there is no change to their operating structure, net operating income, we would assume that there would be no change to the rental rates, but we do not control that.
Can Dana come up? Thank you. That makes sense to me, and I just want to articulate, this is a corporation that's requiring, that's asking for this, and do we know anything about this corporation? I want to make sure that counsel understands what this denial is for.
Yeah, Casey, do you know how long they've owned the property? Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that we know how long they've owned the property. I don't think they were the original, they weren't the original developer of the property, and certainly the tax abatement wasn't required for it to be affordable housing when it was made affordable 12 years ago. So I think they're, in my opinion, they're asking for the tax abatement because Tarrant County has reached that population threshold, which allows them to ask for the tax abatement. As Casey said, it's not to create new affordable housing units.
And it may not be really benefiting the resident as well.
That's, that's our assumption.
Okay. Those are my questions, I don't know if anyone.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
What is it, move for denial? Move for approval for denial?
Yes. Got a motion and a second, counsel? Any other discussion? If not, please vote. Motion carries.
Our next item will be MNC 25-0658, which was also pulled from consent.
Councilwoman Rebecca, I know that you'd requested this item be pulled from consent agenda.
I just wanted the opportunity to speak on the importance of this particular item. We discussed it last in our budget, our budget meeting. This is not an insignificant price tag, but the work that we're able to do through this program has really made a tremendous amount of difference, and my hope is by the extending of this pilot program into a full-fledged program, as opposed to just pilot, and the additional funding, as we ramp it up, we're able to move this citywide so that all the districts that are experiencing those folks with chronic homelessness that also have severe mental health issues can get the help and the residents can get the relief they need. So I enthusiastically moved to approve.
Got a motion? Got a motion and a second, counsel? And I'll see Bethany here on behalf of the program, thank you for your hard work, and please give the same to Tara Perez. I know how hard it was to put together Elizabeth's point. It has been incredibly impactful. Councilwoman Martinez, yes?
Yes, and I also want to thank Tara and Bethany, thank you so much for keeping us updated on those individuals that do become housed, but also huge shout out to the NPOs that are helping to identify those individuals that are chronically homeless who also suffer from severe mental health conditions. So thank you all around. Good job.
Got a motion and a second, counsel? If no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries.
Our next item will be announcements of upcoming and recent events in recognition of citizens by mayor and counsel.
Thank you. Our first is Councilwoman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Slides up, please, have a few. All right, first slide, when it comes up, that's the Northside Neighborhood Association's annual Fourth of July Parade. I'll slow down so the slides can catch up. There we go. And so I always appreciate them doing that, rain or shine, did rain, but it kind of cleared up enough for us to launch the parade. Bottom set of pictures you will see right there was the official launch of Fort Worth's firebase EMS system. That took a lot of hands on deck. I want to give my thanks to the Fire Department and Chief Davis for his staff, the Ford Forty MedStar, Fitch and Associates of Al, Indiana, and other staff members that, you know, may not be mentioned here because of brevity, but it's very much appreciated what they did to launch such a, you know, endeavor, because it is important to our city. So thanks, one and all. Next slide. Meacham Airport turns 100 years old. This airport continues to be an economic engine, you know, for the city, for District Two, sixth busiest municipal airport in the nation, so congratulations to Meacham. We had some of the Meacham family members present here, and many here on council signed the airplane in the lobby. Next slide, Fort Worth Police Department. We keep putting out some really great recruits, appreciation to chief and the training staff, and the pictures right there, recruit class 159. Next slide, please. I joined Chief Davis and Dr. Jarvis and Fitch and Associates at the Pinnacle EMS Conference in Phoenix, Arizona recently, went there to speak on what we did here for our EMS firebase system, the transition from MedStar to this current system. I will say this, Fort Worth was recognized as being a trailblazer in that regard, so I appreciate the chief and Dr. Jarvis and Fitch and Associates for really expounding on that point. A lot of eyes are on us for what we did, and let's continue the good work. On the bottom there, slide, I joined Councilwoman Martinez to bid a bond farewell to Francisco de la Torre, lovingly referred to as Paco. He is leading his post as Mexican Council General and is taking an ambassadorial post in Indonesia. So look forward to meeting the new Council General when we have some time. So next slide, National Day of the Cowboy, that was in the Stockyards, had a great parade there, see some famous faces there, a couple of actors, you know, Barry Corbin being one of them, and Miss Teen Fort Worth also joined us there. Let's see, bottom slide, set of slides, Michael Crane, joined me at the ALP National Conference as the Associate of Leadership Programs there. Thanks to Jennifer Trevino for doing that and recognizing all the good work that those programs do. Next slide, Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD Education Foundation Annual Superintendent Recognition Breakfast. So appreciation to EMS for doing what they do to recognize their faculty, staff, and teachers. Fort Worth Stockyards Business Association, shout out to them because they keep adding members, and that's a great thing. The Stockyards is continuing to activate and is bringing a lot of good business attention to that area. Next slide, Home to Texas Intern Sponsorship Program. Want to give my thanks to a lot of staff members that were there, Valerie Washington, Deanna Giordano, let's see, who else? Joaquin, you know, was also there, Jessica McCarron was there, and many others. So congratulations to those interns that graduated, and hook 'em horns. Next slide, Tarrant County College turns 60 years old. I had the honor of speaking on behalf of Mayor Parker, also along with Arlington Mayor Ross and Mansfield Mayor as well. So very good program, appreciation to the partners. Next slide, please. Joined Susan Alanis and Kate Beck on a Central City River Project tour, identifying those areas that we're going to be concentrating on when it comes to development and infrastructure build-out. So appreciation to them. It's back to school time when kids started today. Unity One Credit Union in the Stockyards, Family Auto in the North Side, and North Side Diamond Hill Jarvis Youth Association, some pics there from their back-to-school events. So thanks, one and all. Next slide, Lateral Class 11. Councilmember Lars Dorf spoke in that, he, you know, got the troops all rallied, and I think very excited to be there, as he always does, along with Mayor Parker as well. So appreciate all the good training that goes into making our new recruits Fort Worth Police Officers. Chief Aldrich held a listening session at Diamond Hill Community Center recently, so got some good feedback from the community there, so appreciate him making those outreaches because that's what makes community policing possible, listening to residents. And that's all I have. Thank you.
So if we can get started, I want to start by, I think our first, you can go past that picture of me, is I absolutely had a ball celebrating with the White Leg Hills Neighborhood Association and the Woodhaven Neighborhood Association for Independence Day. And so not only did I get a chance to take pictures with amazing residents and our fabulous firefighters, but I ate a whole lot of ice cream that I shouldn't have eaten. And then finally, I ended the evening with my fellow council members as we watched fireworks on the Trinity, and I ate some more ice cream there. Next slide. And so one of the neatest things, right after I came into office, was we celebrated District Five Day here at City Hall, and we brought about 40 young people from across the district in to talk about municipal government, what it does, and why it's so important. And they were absolutely amazing, fabulous, they are going to be the future leaders of tomorrow, and so it was my honor to host them, and that was just an amazing day. And there in the corner, you see a young man in a white shirt and some blue jeans, and so we had our very own District Five, Dos Diego Vasquez, who helped us get through the day. So that was a great day. Next slide, please. Ah, thank you, Mayor, because you brought together summer interns, and District Five was well represented with an amazing young woman, Caitlin, who was, while she worked for the mayor, we adopted her because she was from District Five. Today was her first day of school, and she's excited about all the possibilities that she saw while she was working here, and I look forward to her running for office soon because she has the book. But we also were able to do some neighborhood association meetings, and I think the picture that you're looking at is, the top picture is, we were in Moza Valley and met with the residents out there to talk about the possibilities, and the picture below is we had a joint neighborhood association meeting and got about 60 residents from across the district to come and talk about what we'd like to see in District Five and our vision, and it was a great meeting, and we will continue to do those quarterly. Next slide. And then, this one makes me get a little teary, because we have an amazing facility in District Five, Vitas Healthcare, and one of the residents who transitioned, Alton Pelton, his family came together and dedicated books, many of the books that he wrote and books there, to have an inspirational library. It was a very solemn day, but also a very joyous day. As you see in the picture in the top left, that's his family, they are wonderful, and what they did for Vitas was just amazing. So I was grateful for the opportunity to attend that with my district director, Lisa Baker. Next slide, please. Ah, I am now an honorary member of the Black Law Enforcement Officers Association, and what a wonderful group of Fort Worth's finest to come together. They had a meeting today, but I was here, and so my district directors went and represented us. This group is committed to bridging the gap and talk about community policing, and there on the right side, if you look at me high-fiving, that's an amazing young policewoman who just graduated. you look at me high-fiving, that's an amazing young policewoman who just graduated from the academy. So we were talking about the futureist right for women in law enforcement. Next slide, please. And this is near and dear to my heart, a garden. It's the Stop Six Choice Neighborhood Initiative, and I want to thank Mary Margaret Lemons and what they are doing. But they now have a community garden. Ahmad Houston is the master gardener there, and if you have not been there, you need to go behind. It's over by Baber's Manor. It is an amazing, extraordinary garden, and the master gardener is extremely knowledgeable. If you want to know anything about gardens, you need to go over there and talk to Mr. Houston. Next slide, please. And then I just want to talk about, we've, so July for many people was a break. For me, it was not. I was in the office almost every day, and we met with multiple community organizations and groups to talk about what we'd like to see in District Five, and they're some of our community partners. Jeanette, I have to tell you that I did sneak over to your public art project for the mosaic, and I did a whole tile, and I did not mess up one little piece of it. But just an extraordinary time spent in the month of July, out in the field and visiting with folks about what we'd like to see in not only District Five, but in Fort Worth. And I think we may have, that's it? Dr. Hall.
Okay, thank you. All right, you can go past that. Thank you. All right, so like my fellow councilwoman, Deborah Peoples, July was supposed to be a break, and it was not a break for either one of us. We passed each other in the halls quite a bit. I wanted to catch up. And so I started off the month of July at Lake Como Fest. It was on Thursday, July 3rd, held at Lake Como Park. I was joined by my colleagues, Michael Crane and Jeanette Martinez. It was a great time. We had the Don Diego Band there, lot of vendors and community. It was my first Lake Como Fest. It was a great time. I hadn't planned to stay long because it had already been a long day, but I had such a good time. We did a little line dancing, and before you know it, it had been a couple of hours, so it was a good time. Then there was the Lake Como Parade. So it was a long day and an early morning. And so it started the Lake Como Parade. It was my first time being the grand marshal of parade. I shared the honor this year, and so it was a good time. You see the floats there. That was actually my first Como Parade, and I'm going to go ahead and start taking donations for candy, I think maybe in May or June, because I had so much candy and two vehicles, and we ran out of candy. It was not enough, and you just don't know how I felt watching people, the kids, want candy, and I was completely out. And I was joined there by also Ms. Bailey Howell, who is Ms. Juneteenth F W 2025. I think she's gone on to win state since then. And then that's my handsome husband down there in the corner, who was my chauffeur. And y'all, I'm like, you know, I'm having him lean in into his volunteerism. So he did a really good job. Next slide. All right, the Black Law Enforcement Officers Association, I was on July 8th. As you see, we're still within a week of things to do. I was supposed to speak that day, but Councilwoman Hall does work a full-time job, and I was not able to get away. It's back to school time. But I do have two very capable young ladies in my office, and so Andrea represented, and Kennedy Jackson, and Kennedy gave remarks on our behalf. So we're well represented. Next slide. And on July 11th, we had invitation to be participants at the Fort Worth Hispanic Chamber of Commons Bowling Tournament. And I don't want to say unfortunately, I was already scheduled to attend the 159th graduation for that day, but I did want to stop by and say hello, as did my colleague, Councilman Crane. And so we did stop by. Fun fact, I took bowling by correspondence in high school, so I will be playing next year with advance notice. Next slide. All right, so there's that police graduation that I went to later after the bowling tournament. It was so nice to attend. As you see, the young man pinning his father. It was quite the event, and had a great time. Also, I had coffee with the cop the following day, so I got up on Saturday. It was over in District Eight, but who can turn down a donut and some coffee? And I am wearing my workout clothes because I was going to eat donuts. But I had a great time meeting with the citizens that came out to meet their fellow police officers there in the neighborhood. Next slide. And also hosted my first town hall on Wednesday, July 23rd, the Vivian J. Lincoln Library. It was standing room only. We had, I would say, at least 100 or so people come and attend. I wanted to thank all of the partners and presenters who were there to make it a really nice evening. Crowley ISD came out, Fort Worth ISD to share information, Fort Worth Fire and Police Departments were represented, Parks and Recreation, Transportation of Public Works, Code Compliance and Zoning, Environmental Services, Communications and Public Engagement, and Office of the Police Oversight Monitor. Not only were they there tabling, they were also there to answer questions and be a part of the presentation. It was a great evening, and I wanted to thank them all for their participation, and we'll be doing it again real soon. Next slide. I had the pleasure to have already traveled to my first PD situation at the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials, also known as NBC Leo. It was in Houston, Texas, so I didn't have to go far. And I, believe it or not, met some colleagues from my husband's city, hometown city, which is Rocky Mount, North Carolina. Never met anyone else from Rocky Mount, North Carolina except his high school reunion, but I was able to meet some people there. But it was a great opportunity for learning, to kind of get a jumpstart on how it can be impactful in the community, and how to bring resources and just innovative ideas to help support our communities of District Six. Next slide. Crowley ISD opened what we affectionately had referred to in Crowley as Elementary School Number 17 during the bond program. It has been named Baylor Elementary School. It was a ribbon cutting. Unfortunately, I was at NBC Leo, but Kennedy was able to represent. The Baylor family actually was the first family to integrate Crowley ISD, and that's the significance of the name for the facility. So they will be the Baylor Cowboys. I'm a hometown fan, so I'm excited about that. It's a beautiful school. If you ever have an opportunity to stop by and see the school, please, please visit. Next slide. On this past Friday, August 8th, I was fortunate, I don't know that I was a guinea pig, but I think I was the person who got to be a part of the bringing this back, this practice of touring your district. Mayor Mattie Parker, along with Dana Bergoff, and Sana, and Whitney, sorry, I'm learning everyone's names still. We all, and also Andrea from the office, we all got to tour District Six. We had reached out to our neighborhood presidents to ask them to share with us different areas of concern. As a council member, you get to drive around and you see things, and you make a note, but of course, there are people living with situations and concerns and things that they see every day that you may not be aware. And so we listed these stops here, and for the most part, we got to all of them. Andrea was very intentional to create notes so that we would have them and have the appropriate departments address those concerns. So it was a great experience, and it was great to have a conversation with leadership. Just, it's one thing to tell people about the things that you're experiencing, but it's something completely different to actually be able to point to them and show them. Next slide. And it's back to school time. I'm a 25-year veteran educator, and I love back to school. And so it was great to be with the kids. I got to go to Chisholm Trail, where they were doing their back to school bash. You've seen that first picture, that is a young man cutting hair in what is a mobile, it's a school bus, but it's a mobile barber and braiding studio. And he's got this great flat screen, and they were watching the football game, and it's air-conditioned. It was very comfortable and a nice relief from the Texas sun. And then also, I had the opportunity, I donated backpacks to the Chisholm Trail, and so I had a few there in my car for some kids that were late arrivals, and I was able to share backpacks and school supplies with them. Also, Lake Como had their annual back to school bash. Arlington Heights Basketball Team had volunteers to be on staff, and so they were there helping distribute supplies, help the kids get to their different classes because they have to take classes there in order to get their school supplies and backpacks. And also had Double Eagle there, who provided burgers for all of the families and the kids that attended. And again, at the Como Community Center, it was, I would say, at least over 100 kids, maybe more than 100, maybe almost close to 200 kids there. But they had different classes like conflict resolution, drug awareness, and things of that nature that the students had to go through with their families before they were qualified to go play and just have a good time in the gym with the inflatables and also receive their school supplies. Next slide. And so we do have our next town hall meeting. We're trying to have our town halls every quarter. Our next one will be on Thursday, October 2nd, at the Como Community Center. We're having it just before their monthly NAC meeting. And we would love to invite everyone out as I expressed, to the Como community, as well as those further south in District Six. We are one District Six, and so can do two of everything. So we'll be trying to rotate our locations so that everyone can feel welcome and have somewhere convenient to be. So I encourage those who live in southwest Fort Worth to come and visit us over in Como. We have more than enough room to accommodate you, and hopefully our Como community will continue to visit southwest Fort Worth. We are one District Six. That's it. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna be brief, as the preacher said, time has been well spent. Next slide, please. Next Level Cosmic Therapy Camp, you guys are here for that. Next slide. My eighth year celebrating the Como Parade. You see Katrina Carpenter, you see Chief there and others, Christine Moss, and had a wonderful time. Next slide, please. That's the crew, Grand Island. Next slide. Had an opportunity to discuss with William McDonald YMCA Youth Government and Civil Leadership Program. Awesome youth had a lot of questions about civil engagement, and was able to host them here at City Hall. Next slide. Our District Eight Fourth Annual Back to School Giveaway, and the far right is Jeanette's sister, and our lovely secretary, Jeanette, always brings a U-Haul load of school supplies. And so later on, I'll tell you more about that in the next couple of weeks. But we had an awesome time. Chief was there again. We had backpacks, free haircuts, and the list go on and on at the William McDonald YMCA. Final slide. You are invited to a event hosted by Cal Thomas, talking about home ownership and financing at the Nick and Lou Martin University, at, sorry, Texas Wesley University, in the Nick and Lou Community Room on the second floor. Then also, we have the Police Chief finalist form that's coming up this week, so I encourage all of you to come out to that. And I don't have a slide for this, but we're preparing our state of the district, which is our annual town hall that we have, and I heard you articulate standing room, and Charlie and I have been battling who had the most people, and so we'll let, no, no, you didn't. And also Allen. And so we'll give you those dates, and we're looking forward to having only breathing room to stand and talk. Those are my comments.
Now? Yes, all right. Well, y'all can argue all you want over who had more people, but we know who beat you in kickball every year, and that would be me. So, all right. First slide, we have Wedgewood Neighborhood, Greater Wedgewood Area. We had a Congregate Living Panel. I want to thank Code, Legal, Fort Worth PD, and then we also had members from Health and Human Services and ACTS there to help navigate issues of communal living in the Wedgewood area. Next slide. I too had ice cream, Councilwoman Peoples. Had the opportunity to attend the South Hills Neighborhood Association Annual July Ice Cream Social. So it was a lot of fun. Next slide. Was invited to speak at the Texas Housing Conference on a local government panel, and all I got was this fabulous photograph with our city, one of our city attorneys, Ms. Leslie Hunt, who was also there, making sure she brought home the latest and greatest back to the city. Next slide. Councilman Nettles reminded you, but coming up this week, we do have our finalist public forum for police chief, and this is your opportunity as public to be engaged and have your voice heard in the process. It's an important job, so I'd encourage you all to participate. Next slide. All right, 817 Day is just around the corner. We will have our third annual Amplify 817 Day Showcase. It will be held August 16th, as opposed to the 17th, at the Post or Verdy Social Club, whichever you like to call it. Next slide. All right, we have a public meeting coming up on Heritage and Paddock Park in the Streetscape Improvements, August 20th, at the Botanic Gardens at 6:30, if you're interested in learning more about that. Next slide. Okay, August 23rd, it is Family Night at the Pool. It's an after-hours swim under the stars from 6:30 to 9:00. It's your opportunity to get in your last bit of the Forest Park Pool before it closes for the season. Next slide. All right, we have our Main Street Downtown Intersections Preconstruction Meeting. It's riveting. I hope I can meet you all there, September 4th, at the City Center Boardroom from 2:00 to 3:30. And that is all I've got.
Thank you, Councilmember Rebecca. Councilmember Martinez.
Yes, all right. So on August 2nd, we hosted our first District 11 Community Wellness Fair. This is in partnership with Amen Carter High School, Fort Worth ISD Trustee, Roxanne Martinez, and Carter Riverside Neighborhood Association. So we brought together 39 organizations who provided health-related services and resources to District 11. Residents had the opportunity to get free blood pressure, cholesterol, and PSA tests, haircuts. Children also received vision screenings, and middle and high school students could sign up for athletic physicals. We also had fun activities like bracelet making and jazzercise. The Texas Rangers were there. Kids got to decorate wiffle ball bats and meet ex pitcher Yovani Gayardo, who I believe is a graduate of Arlington Heights High School. So local, triple tech. I'm so sorry, yes. Next slide. So by the numbers, we had a total of 335 people at the Wellness Fair, so those that we could actually verify. So I think we had more. 30 people had haircuts. Both children and adults took advantage of that. 178 kids decorated wiffle ball bats. 78 students received athletic physicals. 16 volunteers, most of them from Code Blue. Thank you, PD, for helping us recruit those volunteers. And 92 toothbrushes were given out. So the goal of the Community Wellness Fair was to foster a healthier, more connected community. Thank you to our partners and sponsors. Thanks to our partners and sponsors, we were able to bring that vision to life. Sponsors that included Coca-Cola Southwest Beverages, Encore, Mavericks Realty Group, Joanne Jensen with Greater Blessing Financial. A huge shout out to Fort Worth PD, Central Division and Community Engagement Unit for attending, and also for helping to bring out their big grill and cook hot dogs and burgers for all attendees. I genuinely appreciate everyone who made this event possible, but just thank you so much to my dream team, Natalie and Rachel, who really put this event together and made it successful. Next slide. So I wanted to take the time to announce the Fair Haven Block Party at Eugene McCray Community Center. That's this Saturday, August 16th. Residents can enjoy free food and games while engaging with neighborhood services and other city departments to discuss ways to improve that Fair Haven area. So this is a part of the Neighborhood Improvement Program, and so they'll be coming together to connect with each other, but also to provide that information on what they, how they want to see those funds utilized. And so if you live in this area, I hope to see you there. Please share this information with others who would be interested in attending, and that's all I have.
Thank you, and Councilmember Lars Dorf.
Thank you, Mayor. Not many slides, but I do want all of us to remember, I thought it's important that we remember Sergeant Billy Randolph, who a year ago today was killed in the line of duty protecting his fellow police officers on behalf of the city. Earlier this afternoon, had the distinct honor of speaking before the Black Law Enforcement Officers Association, and it wasn't lost on me in that moment, that on any day, at any moment, those police officers could also pay the ultimate sacrifice, because we asked them to, on all of our behalves, everyone here. We ask a lot of them, and more importantly, we ask a lot of their families that watch them leave every day, knowing that it could very well be the last day. And so Mayor, if it's all right with you, I'd like for all of us to have just a moment of silence on behalf of Billy Randolph and the family that he lives behind, and more important, the legacy that he leaves behind as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, Jeanette, I think we can move now into non-consent.
Non-consent speakers, Mayor, and we have three.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Bob Willoughby, will be followed by Jennifer Harnish. Mr. Willoughby here? Nope. Jennifer Harnish? Jennifer Harnish, please, followed by Lauren Dean. Jennifer here? No. Hi, Jennifer. You're behind that monitor. I didn't see you.
Welcome back from summer. We're very happy. I'm Jennifer Harnish, by the way. I'm chairman of the Board of Streams and Valleys. And tonight, we are very happy to provide funding for the Philistilli Plaza in Trinity Park, and we definitely appreciate the city's participation in that as well. The Tilly Plaza will add seating, a pavilion shade with 62 new trees, a butterfly garden, conservation education, and improved trail connections and a place for the community to gather. Many of our steadfast friends and donors and visionaries came together to make this happen over the last several years, so we very much appreciate the partnership that we have on this and the Park and Recreation Department for shepherding the project through the, through all the channels here. Streams and Valleys has a legacy dating back to 1969. Phyllis Tilly, she's the namesake of the pedestrian bridge in Trinity Park, is considered our founder, along with many of her friends and former Fort Worth civic leaders. They were a very colorful crew back in their day, but they had a passion for preserving and improving the Trinity River and the green spaces. And believe it or not, Fort Worth is a river city. 12 years ago, the architect Miguel Rosales designed the Philistilli Bridge, and in October, we are having Miguel come back to Fort Worth to Keith House for a reception. He's got a new book called Bridges as Structural Art. And y'all will be invited to this. It's in October, but the Philistilli Bridge is prominently figured in here. There's a, there's a chapter on the whole Philistilli Bridge and the history of it and some of the other bridges across the country. So we're, we're very excited to have Miguel come back to Fort Worth and celebrate that with us. Also tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Lauren Dean. She's the new Executive Director of Streams and Valleys, and she's been our in-house celebrity this week because social media has been blowing up since we put the press release out. Her, she's, it's just on fire. She's, everybody seems to know Lauren here in town, or they know her dad, or they know her brother. So I think there's a lot of people and a lot of eyes on you right now. Our selection team with Streams and Valleys didn't know all that history with how well-known she was here in town. We saw over 10 years of leadership at the Katy Trail, her years of fundraising experience and her relationship building with T3 Partnership. Lauren told us in the interview process that she wasn't looking for a new career change, but this was going to be a dream job for her. So it kind of puts her back where her roots are in Fort Worth and her passion for the trail. So we are very thrilled to have her at the helm of Streams and Valleys.
Lauren, please.
Thank you for that very warm introduction. I hope I am a worthy servant for Streams and Valleys. Being from Fort Worth, it's really exciting to be in this capacity for an organization that's doing such big things for Fort Worth in partnership with the city. This Tilly Plaza enhancement project that we're doing in partnership with the city is just a great example of what can be done when public and private sectors come together for the benefit of our community. So I'm just very thrilled and excited to get going to conserve and enhance the park and trail system for the residents of Fort Worth. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Jennifer. Counsel, that's the conclusion of our non-consent speakers. I don't think we have anything yet. We will, though. No, it was just the non-consent speakers all at once. I know. That's okay. Well, I'll let you make the motion. That's perfect. Our next separate changes to memberships on boards or commissions, correct?
First one being 25-5343, board appointments from the mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, this is a board appointment to appoint Ryland Gray in his first term to the Community Development Council, would be effective August 12th, 2025, ending October 1st, 2027. And as usual, the respective application resume is attached and original copies will be maintained by the city secretary's office. Entertain a motion at this time. Motion of second, counsel, please vote. Deborah, try one more time. I don't know, I didn't register. It's stuck. Motion carries.
Next will be 25-5337, board appointments from District 4.
Councilmember Lars Dorf.
Thank you, Mayor. I request your consideration to appoint the following individual to the board below with a partial term effective August 12th, 2025, ending October 1st, 2026. Joseph Austin for the Historic and Cultural Landmarks Commission. Respective application and resume are attached. The original copies will be maintained in the city secretary's office.
Thank you. Motion of second, please vote.
I believe Mr. and Mrs. Austin, they're still here, so thank you guys for hanging out so far and thank you for dedicating your time to the city.
Motion carries.
Next is 25-5339, board appointments from District 5.
Councilmember Peoples.
So Mayor and Counsel, I request your consideration to appoint the following individuals to their respective boards with terms effective August 12th, 2025, and ending October 1st, 2027. The first is Marvin Jose Diaz, who is here and tonight with his lovely wife. And the second is Kazi, and that would be to the Aviation Advisory Board. The second is Kazi Choudry to the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Board. The respective applications and resumes are attached. The original copies will be maintained in the city secretary's office.
Motion of second, counsel, please vote. It's being finicky tonight. Does it work? Oh, there it went.
It went.
Motion carries.
Next is 25-5341, board appointments from District 6.
Councilmember Hall.
Mayor and Counsel, I request your consideration to appoint the following individual to the Board Zoning Commission with a partial term effective August 12th, 2025, and ending October 1st, 2026, Mr. Frederick Robinson. The respective application and resume are attached. The original copy will be maintained in the city secretary's office. I did want to say Mr. Robinson is here in the audience, and I want to thank him for his willingness to serve Fort Worth and the residents of District 6.
Got a motion of second, counsel, please vote. Motion carries.
Our next is 25-5335, board appointments at large for the City Plan.
I can roll with this one if that helps. We've got appointments of the following. Sarah Milton, alternate place 3, City Plan Commission Capital Improvements Plan Advisory Committee for Transportation Impact Fees. There's a test on that one later. John Reed, same thing, alternate place 4, City Plan Commission and Capital Improvements Plan Advisory Committee for Transportation Impact Fees. And Dr. Beth Gillette, City Plan Commission and Capital Improvements Plan Advisory Committee for Transportation Impact Fees, counsel. Thank you. Motion of second, counsel, please vote.
Amazing service and willingness to serve.
Thank you, Pastor Reed. We appreciate you being here.
Counsel, next will be resolutions. And Mayor, I believe we can-
Motion carries. Sorry, Jeanette.
Sorry.
You're good.
We can take the following resolutions together as one motion if counsel would prefer, and that would be 25-5216, 5218, 5219, 5220, 5221, 5279, all relate to appointments to various TIF boards.
Got a second.
Got a motion of second, counsel, please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be Resolution 25-5307.
Entertain a motion, counsel. Motion of second, counsel, please vote. Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 25-5320.
Motion of second, please vote. Motion carries.
Next is 25-5319.
Motion of second, please vote. Motion carries.
Next, Mayor, we have a request to take up MNC 25-0744 relating to the streams, the Tilly Plaza, out of order, so.
Okay, so it's 25-0744 at this time, correct?
Yes.
Councilmember Beck? Motion of second, counsel, please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0682. Staff is available if there are questions. And Mayor, I believe we have a speaker.
Thank you. We've got Kelly Porter on hand if there are questions from counsel. Our speaker is Dan Hayes.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name's Dan Hayes and I live in central Meadowbrook. I was a member of the stakeholder group that met with the city staff and consultants over the course of developing this plan, and I'm generally supportive of the plan, and I know a lot of hard work's been put into getting to this point. I look forward to working with Armin, Kelly, and others in the next phase of planning, and I'm especially looking forward to the reconstruction of East Lancaster Avenue in the years ahead. I truly believe the corridor has bright days ahead if we help foster the type of redevelopment the street needs. The East Side Transportation Plan coupled with the Trinity Metro Transit Oriented Development Plan can help, help us get there. Once we reach a tipping point and develop our interest, it will begin to happen organically as it has in the near south side and other parts of the city. I look forward to the corridor's next chapter and the other improvements that can help move people more efficiently in East Fort Worth. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Counsel, at this time, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do we need to close the public hearing and move to approve? Deborah, if you don't mind revising your motion.
I moved that we closed the public hearing and then I moved to approve the motion.
Thank you. Got a motion of second, counsel, please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0745, and staff is available if needed. Joel McElhaney is available.
Councilmember Beck, Joel McElhaney's here, but if there are no speakers at this time, entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to close the public hearing and approve the MNC.
Motion of second, counsel, please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0676, and staff is available. Juliette Moses. And Mayor, we have one speaker.
Bill Bergen. No speakers, counsel. Entertain a motion at this time. Councilmember Crane. Try again. There we go. I don't know. Green light means not green. There we go.
Tonight. Okay, there we go. Thanks, Mayor. Just, I've been advised by a legal city attorney that I should recuse myself from this vote given my wife's employment with Childcare Associates.
Thank you, Michael. Councilmember Nettles, now I can entertain your motion.
Move to close the public hearing and approve MNC 25-0676.
Got a motion of second, counsel, please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be MNC 25-0677. And Mayor, before any action, I want to read into the record that the council district should be District 8 rather than 5, and staff is available if there are questions.
Thank you. Counselmember Nettles.
Move to close the public hearing and approve MNC 25-0677.
Got a motion of second, counsel, please vote. Motion carries. Ms. Sheridan was happy about that one. That was easy, right? Walk down, walk back.
Next will be ZZ-25-090. Mayor, we do have one speaker.
I believe you. Somehow I don't have it on my, hold on just a second. 090?
It's Tim.
I believe, I see it, Tim Sanson. Hi, Tim. You already knew.
Yes, ma'am. Tim Sanson, the organic recycler. Just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight, grateful for all your service. Councilmember Blaylock and I have worked over the last couple of years to make this a possibility to be here. It sounds like we're on the same page, and I'd just like to extend a comment for the council. If you guys ever have any recycling needs or anything that you need help for in your community outreach, I loved your presentations earlier about what you're doing, but anything that we can do to help with that, we'd like to extend that olive branch and see how we can be a better partner for the city. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Tim. Councilmember Blaylock. There we go.
Tim, thank you. Appreciate your willingness to work with the office and with staff to get to the point where we are today. It's, I know it's been a long journey, and anyway, here we are. I want to move to approve as amended by the zoning commission for a three-year time limit on the cup.
Got a motion of second, counsel, please vote. Motion carries.
Next will be ZZ-25-027. Mayor, we have speakers.
Councilmember Martinez. You can go ahead, Julie. He'll get started. Thank you.
Oh, is it gonna display?
He'll, yeah, he'll display it.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm Julie Ledford. I'm president of Hanley Neighborhood Association. Appreciate you listening tonight. I just wanted to come and speak in support of the project. Hopefully the pictures, there we go, if we could zoom in a little bit. But they approached us a couple of years ago and worked in partnership and really helped to explain it to our residents about how this project would serve the needs in our neighborhood, and also were very responsive to the questions that we had. So I want to thank Interfaith for working closely with us. And if you don't, if you're not familiar with historic Hanley, it's a unique area with a population of homeowners and safety is our priority. We have a lot of local businesses and the Wedding District is there as well. And right now, we have Southeast Connector going on, so a lot of change is taking place, but it's a good location for growth. And our members voted in support of this project several years ago when it was still in development. And I just wanted to read from their mission statement. They develop high-quality attainable housing and provide life-changing resident services to families, individuals, and elders in the community. And the nonprofit vision, mission, excuse me, is to create purposeful housing that is affordable for seniors, veterans, workforce, and children of the world. And the other thing I noticed in their pamphlet, it says that home is more than a floor plan. It's an environment that's shaped by people regardless of economics, and by promoting the idea of community, we initiate transformation on a broad scale. So we're really looking forward to your project in our community because that's part of what, me personally, that's what I believe as well, is in growing my neighborhood. I've been a resident of East Side my whole life. I've been a resident of Eastside my whole life. And I did want to say as well, thank you to our councilwoman who comes to visit us, and also Jeanette Martinez. So exciting things are happening in Hanley, so come see us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dan Hayes, followed by Cindy Bowling. You can start, Dan, we have it in our packet, thank you.
Again, my name is Dan Hayes, and I'm the vice president of the Central Meadowbrook Neighborhood Association. Our Neighborhood Association strongly supports this project, which is just three short blocks from our boundary. I wanted to offer three viewpoints to illustrate why this zoning change makes sense. First, the project conforms to Trinity Metro's Transit Oriented Development Plan for East Lancaster Avenue. That plan calls for 3,400 new living units a long or within a five-minute walk of the corridor. This is a view of the Canton Station where Trinity Metro recommends multifamily housing precisely where this project is planned. East Lancaster Avenue has the highest bus ridership in the city with about 65,000 riders a month. Ready access to transit is key in attracting redevelopment and is a factor in why this site was chosen by the developer. A second lens through which this project can be viewed is through my experience delivering Meals on Wheels and now serving on its Board of Directors. I and other volunteers have seen firsthand the frequently depressing conditions clients live in, often with no opportunity for social interaction. I had a client living in a junky RV in the backyard of a house with no air conditioning and an extension cord for power. A current female client lives in a 1960s-era apartment complex with a sizable population of sex offenders living around her. All of us deserve to live out our later years with dignity, and this project can provide that for those fortunate enough to live there. Third, East Fort Worth trails the rest of the city in providing renters with a place to live that's safe, clean, and affordable, a situation this project would help address. This pie chart shows when the Eastsiders have been incredibly effective in opposing zoning changes that would address this critical need. Eighty-seven percent of our apartment housing stock is more than 35 years old. Many are owned by owners more interested in sucking the remaining life out of them than reinvesting in their properties. That's beginning to turn around with Sunset at Fash Place, the Stop Six Choice Neighborhood Development, and a few others like Palladium City Skyline currently under construction on East Lancaster. As a resident of Meadowbrook for 43 years, I understand why some Eastsiders fear more apartments or don't want to see change. Please vote to approve this project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cindy Bowling, followed by Ava Edie.
Thank you, Mayor, council. My name is Cindy Bowling. I'm president of Central Meadowbrook Neighborhood Association, and we are just a couple streets down from the boundary of Hanley, so this is our neighborhood. We have been communicating with Russ Mitchell and his group for three years for this project. They have been completely transparent, encouraging, made changes, wanting to be a part of our neighborhood, be our neighbors, not just a developer. And we are anxious for them to break ground on what will be an amazing home for many of their, they call them elderly, where 50 became elderly, I am lost on that point, but that's what it is. So we're anxious for them to be able to break ground. Again, they have communicated with us every step of the way, and I and all of my neighbors really wish that all zoning applicants would be this conscientious. We really wish that. Please vote yes, so we can get started. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ava Edie, followed by Barney Holland.
Good evening. My name is Ava Edie. I live at 2800 Metters Avenue, within 300 feet of the proposed zoning change, which is not on East Lancaster. Those of us within the 300 feet of the proposal were never contacted by the Palmerly family nor Interfaith prior to the first ZZ meeting in March. One homeowner did not receive his card from the city until after the meeting, and a zoning change request sign was up for only two and a half weeks in March after the meeting, and never up again during this six-month process. The parties involved only addressed the voluntary homeowners' associations, whose representatives speaking in favor all live over one and two miles from the site. We, many of us, we in this corner of historic Hanley, a very diverse group of people west of 820, are opposed to a three-story apartment complex. We desire to keep the character to residential, single-family dwellings. Wanda Conlin, while still a zoning committee member, commented in a July 2022 Fort Worth Report article, duplexes are not compatible to single-family residential dwellings. If duplexes are not compatible, it does not stand to reason, it is not logical three years later to vote that multifamily high density is compatible to single-family. Additionally, the government overlays for federal, state, and city benefit points create problems. These groups seek some benefit points that do not realistically meet their senior concept. Also, they seek pristine land among residences rather than the dilapidated buildings on the main roads which would cost more for demolition, excavation, and debris removal. Furthermore, the attorney, CEO, and director of Interfaith, now Mountain West Community Housing LLC, gave a gross distortion of facts at the previous zoning committee meeting when he said, "We don't choose the site, the state chooses it. The developers and organizations pick land based on the most points for benefits they can get from federal, state, and city, such as the tax credits, abatements, discounts, bonds, and grants from any or all of these three entities." Finally, CEO, Director, Attorney, Michael Russ applies for government benefits under the umbrella of nonprofit, and then boasts in his LinkedIn profile how he has grown his client businesses, over $300 million in real estate assets, commercial and residential spaces, hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of new contracts, and over $50 million in earnable developer fees. I ask, is this the purpose of government point benefits to a nonprofit to increase profit to their client businesses? High density is not compatible to residential, single-family dwellings.
Our next speaker is Barney Holland.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Holland here? No. Councilmember Martinez, that's the conclusion of our speakers.
Okay. Okay, so as you've heard, this developer has met with the Neighborhood Association for the past three years, and knowing that we have a housing crisis and that this development will only be affordable senior housing, a much-needed type of housing, one that we need throughout the city of Fort Worth, I truly believe that they will be a good neighbor and work to address any concerns the surrounding community may have, and so it is for this reason that I move to approve ZZ-25-027.
Got a motion and a second, council, please vote. Councilpeople's trial one more time. It's just, okay. Thank you. And motion carries.
Next will be ZZ-25-073. Mayor, I believe we have speakers.
Thank you. Yes, Ivan Gonzalez. Only if there's opposition, to my knowledge, there is none. Councilmember Beck? Got a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion carries.
Next is ZZ-25-085.
No speakers, Councilmember Peoples? Got a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion carries.
Next is SP-25-002.
Councilmember Hall, we have one speaker. Only if there's opposition, to my knowledge, there is none.
I move for a 30-day continuance.
Got a motion and a second, council, for continuance. Motion carries.
Next is ZZ-25-091.
Councilmember Nettles, we have no speakers on this item. Motion and a second, please vote. Councilmember Crane, second, that's okay. Motion carries.
Next is ZZ-25-092.
Councilmember Blalock, we have two speakers on this, only if there's opposition, to my knowledge, there is none.
So I would like to thank Brittany and Justin for coming to represent. Appreciate you. I've moved to approve.
Got a motion and a second, council, please vote. Let's try one more time. Thank you. Motion carries.
Next is ZZ-25-096.
Councilmember Nettles, we have two speakers on this item, only if there's opposition, to my knowledge, there is none. Got a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion carries.
Next is ZZ-25-101.
Two speakers, Councilmember Blalock, only if there's opposition, there is none. Got a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion carries.
Next is ZZ-25-102.
Councilmember Martinez, our first speaker on this is Mariana Oda, followed by Dan Hayes.
My name is Mariana Oda. I am the co-founder of Oda's Real Estate. We originally intended with this building to create a, like a shopping center or a convenience store, something of that nature. But we are Oda Real Estate. We aim to create a positive impact for both the community and the economy. Therefore, we have reevaluated the original intention of this building into creating a four-unit building that will allow different tenants, and we're seeking to approve this change in order for us to have more opportunities for various tenants, not only a certain one. We are planning to get more like some sort of like a nail salon or beauty shop, a donut shop, and at the same time, we will be addressing the concern of the community of the alcohol, of the sale of alcohol, which was one of the concerns. And due to the proximity that we have to a school zone, we will not be allowed to do any of those nature of sales. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dan Hayes, followed by Eleanor Forfeng Brockman.
This is my last trip up here for tonight. Well, after hearing that, that kind of changes a little bit of what I was going to say, but there's no reason to change the zoning at all to accomplish any of the things that she just mentioned. ER is perfectly capable of handling that and does not require a zoning change. So my ask would be to deny with prejudice and let her stick with her ER zoning. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eleanor Forfeng Brockman, followed by Cindy Bowling.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I wish to oppose this proposition, partly because, as was said, a zoning change is not required for the sorts of businesses that are proposed for the space, but if the property is later sold and zoning has changed, it is possible that alcohol could be sold at this location. There are other reasons as well. One is that I didn't submit photographs when, before the deadline, but this is a very busy street, one block north and one block south. There is an intersection with Meadowbrook and with East Lancaster, so there is a lot of traffic, and you can't tell by this, but where the red is, the red picks out that particular property, and right along the south edge of that, where the red lettering is, is our street, Kenwood Court. It's a cul-de-sac that comes along the south boundary of the property. Also, right in that area, there are three bus stops, three entries and exits to parking lots, and three driveways. The parking area in the front of the building is raised so that either coming from Kenwood Court or driving down the ramp from the parking lot in the property itself, the view of traffic, particularly foot traffic, is obstructed. Now, you might notice the yellow arrow that says 200 feet from this, from the Meadowbrook Elementary School property. We have schoolchildren and families walking to elementary school down Kenwood Court, and there are also children that are cycling or walking to a school which is two blocks to the north. There is a lot of foot traffic, and this is a very dangerous area to have the kind of business that would have a lot of people driving in and out. In addition, the only access to the back of the property, which would be serviced by delivery trucks and trash trucks, is down Kenwood Court and a very hard turn to the left. The area of Kenwood Court has, often has parking on both sides of the street because there is a duplex right across, across the street from this property, so there is no space for a vehicle to go and turn. Thank you very much.
Cindy Bowling, followed by Oscar Ortiz.
Thank you again, Mayor, council. Cindy Bowling, president of Central Meadowbrook Neighborhood Association. Based on what we just heard tonight, for the very first time, the only verbal communication from this applicant, there's no need for this zoning change. This application should have been pulled. We shouldn't have been here till eight o'clock tonight, only to be here that what they now want to do with the property is what it's already zoned for. The case should be denied with prejudice, so we're not here a month from now, spending time at zoning, a couple hours, with no verbal communication from the applicant. Tonight until eight o'clock, no verbal communication from the applicant until tonight, saying no, they, they want to do everything within their current zoning, okay? But again, it should be denied with prejudice, so they don't come back a month from now. This application is the perfect example of why no hearing of any kind should be set on an application for zoning change without the applicant reaching out to the affected neighbors and council district, because we are all here tonight. Because we are all here tonight, you all, the zoning commission who volunteers their time, we, the citizens, the same number appeared at zoning, we're all here volunteering our time. Yet, they come down and ask for something without talking to us about it, and they get a hearing, and we all have to come down here. So I urge you not to set hearings on applications when there has no, been no communication from the person wanting to come into our neighborhood without even knowing us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Oscar Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Oscar Ortiz, and I live at 4221 Kenwood Court, right next to the property at 2521 Oakland Boulevard. I'm here with my neighbors who could make it. Those who couldn't, I know have written letters to you. But I'm here representing a, as a concerned father, a husband, and a protector of our four little children, ages 10, 8, 6, and our baby that is just one year old. Those of you who are familiar with Lancaster and Oakland Boulevard will know that some of the fears that I have are not unreasonable. When I'm away from home, I constantly ask myself, what would my wife do to protect herself with four little ones if someone broke into our home? We already struggle with crime on Oakland Boulevard and Lancaster Avenue, which is just around the corner from this property. My children have witnessed things that no child should ever have to witness: prostitution, open drug deals, violence, and people so deep in addiction that sometimes you can't tell if they're awake, unconscious, or even alive. Some of the conversations that I've had with my wife over the last couple of years go somewhat like this: What do you do, or what would you do, if a drunk person came up to the front door? What would you do if a drug addict broke into the backyard? Before you even get out of the car, where do your eyes go first? Right now, my neighbors and I, we can manage. We work with our amazing neighborhood police to keep the trouble on Lancaster from spilling into our block. But if you rezone this property, the trouble that the police work so hard to keep out is going to come to our doorsteps. And this is not a hypothetical. Two years ago, as many of you might know, there was a fatal shooting at the Conoco just down the street, just a few feet from the property. And this is a store that sells alcohol. So, Mayor, members of the board, I'm asking you to please vote no with prejudice. The city's own experts agree. The zoning commission voted unanimously, seven to zero, to deny this change. They found it not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and not consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. These rules exist to protect homes from exactly the kind of high-intensity businesses that is, that is being proposed here. Please, members, think of the families and all the children. I'm not asking for a privilege, just for my own family and children, but for the daycare across the street from this property and the two schools that were just mentioned. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Martinez, that's the conclusion of our speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you've heard, it brings me pause when a property owner refuses to meet with the surrounding community. And allowing alcohol sales on a property with continuous code violations, I feel, will only exacerbate, I hope I pronounced it right, those issues. So it is my intention to protect the integrity of this neighborhood and move to deny with prejudice, ZC-25102.
Got a motion and a second, council. Motion carries.
Mayor, do you want to take up the item for reconsideration?
Yeah, we're going to do a voice vote to reconsider MNC 0708 to allow Dr. Mia Hall an opportunity to recuse on the item. Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, thank you.
So on the matter of MNC 250708, I needed to, I need to recuse myself from this vote due to my employment with the Fort Worth Independent School District.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Entertain a motion at this time, council. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any nays. Motion carries. Thank you. Of course. Now we can move back to ZC-25-103. Councilmember Nettles, we have three speakers. I believe they appear to all before the item. May I allow you to speak first before we take speakers?
From the first.
Stephanie Cook.
Yes, we'll just hear from him, and I can give the motion.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Ryan Trimble here on behalf of Walmart this evening. Pleasure to be with you and super excited to expand our exclusive drone delivery service to the residents of your, your city. It's an exciting time for us here. I did want to introduce our local store lead, Mike Burgess. He's a 24-year veteran of Walmart. He's at the Renaissance Square Store, where they've been really leaning in on their community affairs. They blew out of the water the, the Children's Miracle Network fundraiser for, for Cook Children's, raised over $10,000 at their store. And they've provided a lot of back-to-school supplies as well for local stores. I also wanted to share something Mike shared with me, that the store's e-commerce business has raised, has increased nearly 9% year over year. So we think that the store is really going to, the people, the customers at the store are really going to enjoy this service and respond well to the expanded drone delivery. I did want to add that we are scheduled to visit and do a demo at the Central Meadow Brook Neighborhood Association on September 4th. I know Dan is here. He's fairly involved in his neighborhood. Who knew? Oh.
He just snuck out.
And just snuck out on me. Okay. Well, anyway, we'll, we'll be there on September 4th to do a demo and look forward to visiting with other members of the community as well. I'll pause there. We do have Juan Marrera from Kimley Horn here, as well as the great Stephanie Cook, who brought a zip with her to showcase, and she's from our great drone partner, ZipLine. So I will pause there and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, can we actually see that? Do you have anything in there, any snacks from Walmart that you brought?
Well, Jesus, hungry. Councilmember Nettles, not tonight.
Okay.
But I can pass it around if anybody's interested in holding it. I'm not that strong, and it's not that heavy. But yeah, my name is Stephanie Cook. I'm here with ZipLine with a drone operator. We actually have a few slides, so I can present on that if you'd like, but I also know there's a lot of items on the agenda, so also happy to answer specific questions that y'all might have.
No, I, I really appreciate you guys coming out and thank you for giving this opportunity in District 8. Also, I will ask you to meet with Chelsea to do a demo with Rolling Hills, which is our senior citizens neighborhood that's right there next to Walmart. I think it'll be a great benefit for the drone meal delivery. And so things are happening in District 8. Next time you, you know, bring stack laths or something, would be greatly appreciated.
No tip.
Once you pop, you can't stop. So I move to approve this zoning.
Got a motion and a second, council. Please vote.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Chris only likes children's snacks.
Yes.
Just keep that in mind. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Very much.
Next will be SP-25-008.
Councilmember Peoples, we do have two speakers on this item. The first is Nikki Moore, the second is Bob Bullaby. I do not think Mr. Bullaby is in attendance. Nikki, you can come on down. Thank you. And we do not have any other opposition.
Good evening, Nikki Moore of MMA. This site plan approval is in relation to zoning case 25-074. It was a PD for community facilities limited to worship, recreation, education, museum, and cultural facility. The zoning commission made a recommendation that this also include a site plan, so this is the associated site plan coming before you, before approval.
Got a motion and a second, council.
Next will be SP-25-009.
Travis Clegg is here, Councilmember Peoples. Are there any questions or concerns?
I have none. I move to approve.
Got a motion and a second, council. Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is ZC-25-104.
Motion and a second, council. Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is ZC-25-105.
Got a motion and a second, council. Please vote. Motion carries.
Next is ZC-25-107.
One speaker, only if there's opposition. Councilmember Hill, Maryne Al Poole.
Yes, Maryne Al is going to ask you to come up, and will you just do an overview of
Maryne Al Poole, town site. This is for a revive, restore on Byer Street. They have an existing building right now, and they want to expand the building and build a second building across the street. If you could turn that down, so, yeah, there you go. The, the green space faces Byer Street. There are two existing curb cuts there now, which we will utilize as a one-way in and a one-way out. This will be a two-story building with the, with first floor all parking. There are 23 parking spaces. They'll have direct access to a, a elevator and a staircase, so anyone parking can just walk straight upstairs to the second floor where all the services will be rendered there. There is striped parking on the street, but for the first two blocks, since there is a mix of commercial and residential on this street, but I, we don't expect that they all utilize the on-street parking. If you can walk directly, have covered parking and walk directly to an elevator and go up to your services, I don't think there are going to be parking on the street.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I move to approve.
Got a motion and a second, council. Motion carries.
Next is ZC-25-109.
Councilmember Martinez, we have one speaker on this item.
Good evening, council. I'm Jake Petrie, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this project. Keep it short.
Try it again there.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. I move to approve ZC-25109 as amended by the zoning commission.
Got a motion and a second, council. Motion carries.
Next is MNC 25-0660.
Got a motion and a second, council. Motion carries.
Next is MNC 25-0696.
Motion and a second. Motion carries.
Next is MNC 25-0707.
Motion and a second. Motion carries.
The next two items, MNC 25-0694 and 25-0695. Mayor, we can take with one motion.
Okay. Councilmember Crane. There we go.
There we go. Here, okay. We, we couldn't get past with one of these. Emmons, I move that the Fort Worth City Council adopt the resolution authorizing use of eminent domain to acquire the following: .156 acres in permanent easement and .279 acres for a temporary easement at 335 Wenscott Road in the JV Foster survey abstract number 520, City of Benbrook, Tarrant County, Texas, owned by Ronald J. Miller, and 1.993 acres in permanent easement and 1.738 acres for a temporary easement at 5200 Benbrook Boulevard in the JW Smith survey abstract number 1406, City of Benbrook, Tarrant County, Texas, owned by Cook Team LP. The land rights and the subject property are needed for the Marys Creek Forest main of public use that provides for the transporting of wastewater to future Marys Creek Water Reclamation Facility in order to treat wastewater produced, produced in the rapidly developing western part of the city. The property interest is to be acquired and is described by meets and bounds and depicted by survey exhibits attached to the mayor and council communication. And this motion indicates that the first record vote applies to all units of property to be condemned, and the minutes shall reflect that the first vote applies to all those units.
Got a motion and a second, council. Carlos, try one more time. Thank you. Motion carries.
Next is MNC 25-0698.
Got a motion and a second, council. Due to my employment with Cook Children's, I'll actually recuse from this vote. I do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Motion carries.
Next is MNC 25-0671.
Councilmember Blaylock.
So I'm thrilled to move to approve this agreement to bring Adam Industries to Fort Worth. Adam will develop and expand micro-electronic prototyping in Fort Worth and create a semiconductor fabricating facility accessible through the cloud. More, more R&amp;D activity will boost our GDP, attract specialized talent, and create opportunities for other companies that strengthen industry here in Fort Worth. Like to welcome Adam Industries to Fort Worth. John Lauer, CEO of Adam Industries, is in the audience tonight. Thank you, John. You've been a real trooper sticking out this whole meeting, but I think this is a high note to finish on. So I move to approve.
Got a motion and a second, council. And John, thank you for being here. Please vote. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Mayor, that concludes all of the action items.
Thank you. At this time, council, as we're closing our meeting, I'm going to turn to our Mayor pro tem, Carlos Flores. We have two wonderful individuals to honor this evening and close our meeting. Of course, John J. Hernandez, who was born in 1931, just passing away recently, and then John A. Flores, Councilmember Flores. Just a second, there you go.
All right. In their honor, I'd like to acknowledge John J. Hernandez. He was a longtime advocate, civic-minded person, very service-oriented, grew up in the North Side. He grew up with his family, went to school, several of his children. He dedicated his life to opening doors for others, and he was very involved from one of the founding members of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, supporting Catholic education, numerous boards, commissions, you name it, John was involved. So he was awarded also the Fort Worth Business Press Lifetime Achievement Award, and maintained a lot of connections with his family, and they were very involved also in their neighborhood. And then secondly, John A. Flores, my uncle, proud veteran, accomplished civil professional engineer. He passed away recently. He was also born in Fort Worth in 1933, raised there in the North Side, graduated North Side High School, Texas A&amp;M Corps of Cadets. He earned his civil engineering degree and pursued advanced studies at SMU. Served as a commissioned officer and combat engineer in the US Army. And lots more to say about Uncle John, but simply, you know, we'll miss you, and we'll see you on the other side.